Back here. If I may, there's a 50-foot setback here, so that should give you plenty of space to uh to maneuver things a little bit to to close up that opening. Have one one or yeah, one part of the drive go into the other part on the property, not at the street level or at the street entrance.
So we don't have anything in Asbury 48 foot right now, correct? And I would hate to start a president. That's I agree with Bert that way.
Testing.
So if I'm looking at-
You're good, Sarah.
Thanks, Beth, sorry.
If I'm looking at the drawing correctly, the 150 were at the bottom of it where it's, I'm assuming that's the width of the lot, so 150 plus, so 78 feet of the 150 would be driveway against the frontage prop of the property, it looks like to me. Maybe when you get that back up. Make sure I'm looking at that right. So the down at the bottom where it says 150, I'm assuming that's the width of the lot. Would that be a fair assumption? So then 48 and 30, so they've got or 48 and 30, they got 78 feet of the 150, which is over half of it, which would be curb or which would be driveway, which seems that's to me is seems that's a lot. I personally, I have no problem with the two, there's two, two things we have to approve. I'm, I have no problem with the, the two curb cuts. That's not a problem for me. I just am a little concerned about the 48 feet. I think we should just send it all back to them.
Bob. Are you guys okay with the 32 or the two driveways?
Yes.
And your big concern and your big concern is the second driveway being 48 foot? You can reduce that and just make it be not not to exceed 32. You don't have to accept that he wants 48 feet.
I think if you go to 32, it's going to change the whole diagram because they want to go on the left side of the property and they're already trying to make a circle coming from the right side. I'd want to see the whole thing before I would approve it.
So you're gonna go back and so the recommendation we're gonna do is say um redraw this and council approves your second driveway curb cut, but um your driveway second curb cut can't exceed 32 feet.
I, I, I think 32 feet and then we, we put the wings on is how we got to 38, correct, Nate? So the third, it could be 32 feet without the wings or 38 feet width?
They don't have curb and gutter, so the 38 feet doesn't apply here. The 38 only applies when there's curb and gutter.
They want to set a limit of a certain amount of feet.
Well, our ordinance says 32 feet and that's where they're, they're asking for permission to go 48 feet. And council can give that and council can give that permission.
Can they give the permission for just 38 feet if they want to?
Yes.
I, I, I do see what you're saying. Kind of to uh go back to Bob's comment was I'd, I'd like to see this redrawn. If the house is under construction, they're not pouring that driveway this weekend, so. I'm, I'm sorry. I would, I would like to see this go, go back and uh get redrawn to come up with that 32 foot or, you know, something close. If, if it's a pinch and they need to, to spread out a couple of feet, I, I don't have a real tweak about that, but not 48 feet. I, I, I have to say no on 48 feet.
So we go back to them, do we say 38 feet or we say 32 feet?
We try for 32, that's, that's my feeling.
I think you need to say what, what do you want it to be, 32? Yet you'll approve this with have it redrawn with 32 foot?
I, I guess I would, I would be inclined so that we don't hold them up and it's a pretty big project to say, I, I would be willing to say not to exceed 38 feet as opposed to limiting, assuming that they're gonna put the wings on it just and go not to exceed 38 feet, which is what a driveway with the curb normally. So that would be, right, that's what I'm saying, not to exceed that and then if they have a problem with that, then.
Is that the driveway width or the wing width?
The, the, with the wings not to exceed 38 feet, which is code right now, it's.
No, Russ, Russ, this is a subdivision with no curb and gutter. 38 feet is for the wings when you have curb and gutter.
Okay, so then how come on the, on the drawing then, my next question then is, on a 22-foot driveway, why do you need a 30-foot opening on the other side?
Say that again. Say that again, Russ.
What's the tapered, what without wings, what's a two-car garage, what's, what's the normal drive?
32 foot.
Thought that was a three-car driveway.
Beth, do we need to put this in a form of a motion then?
That would be preferable.
I, I'm just gonna throw a comment and if you want million-dollar houses in the subdivision and you want to limit 10 feet on width of driveway, I, I'd rather have a million-dollar house. I don't know, is, is he gonna slow people down from building? Maybe not, but.
Yeah, right now, this is the most expensive building permit we've had.
I, I, I'm just, I, I don't know that it impacts anybody's life in the long run. You're not necessarily setting a precedent here, but maybe you feel you are.
First, we really don't have room for to have a double driveway like this unless they're the larger lots that are like in Tuscany and Legacy, Hidden Meadows and, and Wedgewood. I mean, these are the only places where we have these uh turnaround driveways.
So, so let me ask you this, though. So they, they put this foundation in and knowing that that retaining wall is gonna be over the, over the sit, the limit from where they could go, they're, that's supposed to be a six-foot limit, right? On a side lot, don't you have to be six foot from the property line? And right now it's five foot.
No, it's only five foot. It's the same as the fence rules. We've had discussions with the builder and with the developer on that.
I'm gonna go out on a limb here and make a motion to the effect that uh that they need to change that 48 feet to a, to 32 and uh reconfigure that so that the joining of those two driveway sections takes place inside the property line. And I make that in the form of a motion and go from there.
And allow a second driveway. Allow a second driveway, yes, okay.
And allow a second driveway.
I have a second. Motion dies for lack of a second, please continue.
Blaine, do they need to know about the driveway tonight? How, how soon do you think realistically would they be pouring the driveway? I guess I'll make a motion to table it with the understanding that they could, if they can, with a explanation that they can try to make that 48 feet narrower. At least meet us a little bit, uh and then we bring, we'll talk about it again.
I'll second.
Motion to table a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All?
Nay.
Okay, motion table four to one, we'll, we'll communicate to the property owner. Move on, next item is Resolution 251 of 2022, a resolution approving the 2023 Asbury Parks and Trail Plan. We have Dan Fox on, Dan, do you? Want to speak to this?
Uh, yeah, um, can everybody hear me there?
Go ahead, Dan, we can hear you.
You can hear me, okay, great. Uh, yeah, so I'm Dan Fox from ECIA. I guess I've been working on with the Parks Board to develop a plan for Parks and Trails for the city of Asbury. The documents included in the packets and um, yeah, I guess I, the, the uh the plan includes um a list of goals and objectives and also a list of future uh park and trail projects for the city. Um, so I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has um on the plan.
Also questions for Dan or, or comments, we'll take it back for discussion.
I guess I, I read through it. Some of it, like the, the, the bike path along Asbury Road, some of its future are hopeful. I mean, I don't know how we're ever gonna get a, we've talked about this a lot about trying to get a bike path and a trail along Asbury Road, so I'm not sure how that is really a, a realistic goal or maybe it's an objective, I don't know. And then the other part that I have a concern about is the high priority by naming specific streets for sidewalks.
They did an excellent job on it. Dan is very impressive. I think the Parks and Rec Board did an excellent job on putting all this together, but I also have an issue with the sidewalks, especially being a high priority and the long-term sidewalk policy. And the thing, I think that's up to the city council to decide, not the Parks and Rec Department or committee.
And they're not deciding their, a citizen board gave an input and they're making a recommendation, you are free to accept, deny, modify, or any form in between. This is their opinion. Again, you don't have to accept it, but they're given what they're brought to do to the table is, is give their opinion on the best interest of the residents. Not defending their, their decision, I'm just telling you they have a right to put it in there if they feel it's relevant in their mind.
Yes, I would like to have it modified with the sidewalks out of there. Otherwise, I think it's a great plan.
Any other comments? Does someone want to formalize the, a motion to accept the plan in any form?
I guess some of my, when I, I read through this, what I thought was that it was a lot of just things that uh we should be looking at with uh our long-range planning and with foresight of what we can do with this area. And I mean, yeah, the sidewalks, that would be a, a nice thing, but doesn't mean it's gonna happen, same thing as your bike lane along Asbury Road. I mean, we know that there's a number of challenges in doing that, but you have to always think of, it's like what would be in a perfect world, what we could have. I guess that's maybe, that's the way I interpret some of this as opposed to it's not a directive by this committee for us to go forward with. I think they did a fantastic job on it uh with a lot of good planning and I appreciate all the hours they put into it along with you, Dan.
I'm inclined to kind of go along, Craig said that I'm, I'm willing to accept the document as it is because as Jim already pointed out, that as far as the sidewalk is concerned, that still comes back to the city council at any point in time, you can vote that down. So I'm inclined to take the recommendation as written.
Bob, anything or a motion from anyone?
I make a motion then to accept, uh, accept the trail plan uh as written. Second.
Motion a sec, second to accept the plan as presented by the committee.
What are we gonna do with this document, Jim?
Well, it just becomes part of your um guidance into the CIP and to potentially the comp plan, but not necessarily there, but it's, it's just something that you'll use in future council uses to guide the direction of the city in terms of these parks and trails.
Is this published to the city community?
It was out on, yeah.
It's been out there for about four to five weeks. Thank you.
Nobody's ever said that there before. Sorry, I was just.
I just want to comment that I think they did a great job on the plan and I, I commend them on the whole plan. My only concern and is just the sidewalks and other than that, I'm, I'm fine with it.
I'd be more concerned with Asbury Road, we've gone through that numerous times and that's why we put a turn lane in because we knew we couldn't support a bike lane and then getting in and out of the city without Dubuque support of it.
Yeah, but if you look at like page 10, the percentage that's lamplack like you're talking about, it's only 20%, so there's still a lot of room for, for that bike lane. Sure, yeah, I understand from east city limits to the top of the hill by Firewood is probably not gonna happen. Any other comments on, on the motion? Right, um, see if we need to roll on that. Beth, you want to roll call? Resolution, I stand corrected, call roll, please.
Clink Hammer. Nay. Miller.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Del Meyer.
Nay.
Keesling.
Aye.
That, that carries three, two. The next item is Resolution 252 of 2022. Uh, this change order is, is it ready? We didn't have anything, okay. But Jeremy, just want to speak to it, we're gonna ask you to table this. Before you do, Jeremy?
Yeah, it, uh, this change order, we did have paperwork in usually late Thursday, early Friday morning upon review from origin staff, there are some questions that had come up on some credits. We don't have those, our questions answered yet, so this is gonna come back to you in January when we have a accurate figure.
Do you want to speak about the facade and some of the things we've discussed, maybe get the feel or?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I mean, a lot of time went into, we, we explored a lot of options when we were looking at the exterior of the building and, and went through several uh renderings. As we were asking for bids or asked cost or estimate of costs on kind of what of our, our ideas were, they were coming back significantly higher than what uh, than what we had projected and, and even what kind of origin had thought just in, you know, non-binding conversation. We make estimates and we think, oh, this should be pretty close, let's do this and they come back, we're like, you know, it doesn't make, it's not our best bank for a buck. You know, that being said, we're, we're sticking with a plan that's closer to base bid. Uh, there's gonna be a little bit of brickwork that has to be done on the front, obviously with the weather, that's not gonna happen now until spring or wasn't gonna happen until spring anyway, but so that'll come before you once we're able to secure that price.
Okay, any questions on that? Now they asked for a motion to table.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, we'll have that wrapped up on the front facade hopefully for the first meeting in January. Our final item is Resolution 253 of 2022, resolution approving pay up number four for the Meadows Clubhouse Project Reconstruction.
Pay up four is, I think basically you can see on the right episode work that's already been completed on the exterior, uh, interior and uh some of the work that was done from the VE exercise earlier in the year.
You want to have a quick update on the progress?
Progress, we're humming right along, I mean, um, I'm out there just about every day. Interior for the most part is completely studded, uh, drywall is going up uh as the electrical subs are in and finishing their wiring and, you know, they're putting up drywall, they're doing a little bit of work on some uh, they're doing some work on the ceiling yesterday, trying to get that smoothed out and ready to go, so there's a lot of people working in there. They're doing a really nice job, Conlin's been great to work with, Origin's been great to work with, so they're, they're moving.
Any questions on the project?
Are we still on the same timetable? I had a schedule.
I have had no indication that we would not meet our schedule right now.
Awesome.
Yeah, that's, and we have impressed upon them repeatedly that that's a, that's a date that we need to hit.
When are the simulators coming?
Uh, once we have the simulator bays themselves finally, uh, when the wiring is done and the drywall is done, I will, uh, we'll get an idea of when. I was on the phone to Trackman earlier in the week and they're just starting the kind of the actual design phase based on blueprints that we have from origin, so it'll be, you've gotta do paint and all that stuff before all that goes in.
They are available?
Oh, yeah. Yep. Yeah, okay, is there a motion to approve Resolution 249 or, or a? 253.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution number 253 dash 2022, a resolution approving pay application number four for the Meadows Clubhouse Reconstruction Project.
Second.
Motion second on 253, pay up number four, any discussion? Call roll, please.
Clink Hammer. Aye. Miller.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Del Meyer.
Aye.
Keesling.
Aye.
Okay, next item is report to police, GM and park board. Any comments, motion to accept?
I just have a question for Jeremy. Uh, how are early memberships going and have we heard any feedback on the prices?
Okay, any other questions or any motion approved?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All, okay, um, so roundtable, Karen? Roundtable?
Want to wish everybody happy holidays, be safe and enjoy the time off.
Such a retired lady.
Yeah, right.
Next retired person, go ahead.
I've got a job, I'll pass. I'll pass.
All right, you.
Go Matt.
Merry Christmas, yeah.
Uh, yeah, just echoing the sentiments of the seasons, but also knowing that uh it's winter time, so let's make sure if we can keep cars off the streets, that's not that, uh, don't need to be parked out there so the clouds can get out there and do their job more easily and uh it's just that much safer out there.
Kurt?
I'll pass tonight.
Us. Uh, I'll pass, but I'm assuming we're gonna talk about that cycle.
Yes, thank you. Um, so you, uh, yeah, I think I made it up, so we did, let me give an update, so you got the um narrative from, from Beth on the potential uh something at the intersection of Sipon Asbury. Uh, Beth, you still on?
Yeah, I am and um probably as an update from um what I had in the packet, I did talk to Mike Van Milligan when I was at the demans meeting um last Thursday and I got a call from Bob Cheezel yesterday and he said Dubuque is on board with um helping us um make that intersection a four-way stop, so when I get back, we'll, you know, meet with Bob and we'll get that going.
So Beth, you're saying they don't need the study, correct, if we're, the council?
I'm not sure about that, I'm not sure about what they're gonna need at this time. They do have engineering staff, um, you know, they have Gus, they got Bob, that would be in-house and would probably be able to do that um kind of thing. Um, they did offer um four LED signs, I'm not sure if we'll have to share the cost of them, but he said that they had four LED stop signs in their inventory, so I think they're looking forward to, you know, he did offer those, so when I get back, we'll get that short up.
Okay, so then the question then still remains is, does the council want to do a commission a study at, at the city's expense or if, or wait for ECIA to do one and potential funding that may come with that? But there will be a delay.
One of the, one of the questions that I raised last time is that they could, I thought they could do a study relatively inexpensively using our traffic cameras. Do we find out what, if there's a difference using our cameras to do that study?
Yeah, Nate's here and I, I'm gonna ask the question again, is the driving force for your stop signs, the traffic count or safety? Because we're in staff thinking you're more, you're thinking more about the safety that is driving your need for this and we were, and Nate, I'll let you jump in in a minute about what type of study we do, is it a traffic counter or is it a safety? Because they're not the same thing, right? So please.
Yeah, that'd probably be a better question for Ben, but um I think what we kind of circled back on was Beth meant, or came back to me and asked more for like a safety um look at, at it rather than more of like the traffic study. So they are two different things, um, cost-wise, talking with Ben, it'd still roughly be around like that four to $5,000 range, the traffic counts, it might save a little bit of money um if we're able to use the cameras, um, but it's still gonna be ballpark around that just for us to do the work and get the study put together.
So again, it's, it's what you studied that we kind of struggled with in staff and we took a leap of faith and leaned more towards the safety, but again, I, I'm not saying that's what you should do, I'm just asking.
I guess, I guess my concern and I, I fully appreciate and understand what they're doing, if, if we get a petition for say Radford and uh Asbury or are we setting ourselves up for potential four-way stops? So there's a lot of other intersections along that quarter, are we setting ourselves up, just, I'm just throwing this out for conversation, are we setting ourselves up for uh additional intersections that may be requested for stop signs?
And maybe that's your justification for the traffic study, right? Or the safety study, one of the two.
But the safety study is just on that corner, right?
Oh, absolutely, I'm saying if, if you're, if, if you're gonna do a safety study and that's your driving force for the four-way stop or whatever that may be and someone comes and says, I want one at the corner of, of uh Dearborn and Asbury, well, okay, let's do a safety study, let's been zero, so you're not setting your- So you're not setting yourself up because you're using safety as the driving force. Um, but then of course there's the traffic thing, right? Is it going to impede traffic and back it up? Well, do you do that at Dearborn and Asbury just because you did it at Cyple and As- I don't know. We, we just need a little more clarification on which direction you want to go with the study.
Well, and maybe just to make it maybe a little bit more cumbersome, I think if we participate in that long-term study with ECIA anyways, we can have multiple intersections, um, study, studied as part of, um, that, that grant, um, if it's awarded. Um, but if we want to do something more immediate, um, with the Cyple road, you know, maybe the direction is that we, you know, just work with Dubuque and see what we need to do together to get that done and in a more immediate timeframe.
What are, what are city staff's opinions on this?
Come to the microphone.
So at Asbury and Cyple, again, it, it's what's driving the stop sign. Is it safety? Is it the number of cars getting backed up in the queue for stopping there? And I guess if we're looking at just from the safety side of it, what's solved the issue? Is the stop sign is going to solve the issue? Because that's what we're asking to have studies. Is that going to solve those problems?
My, yeah, I, my concern is, I mean, how did we jump right straight to the four-way stop? I guess there were some other options along the way that we discussed and a couple others that I had kind of played around with in my mind as well along the way. And, I mean, one of the things that we have to recognize is that Asbury Road is a, uh, major thoroughfare through our city and that by all of a sudden, if we start dropping in the four-way stops along there, it, uh, is going to cause some, uh, issues with traffic.
Yeah, absolutely. Historically, that's been a straight through road. Now you're going to put a stop sign. That's why we're saying if we do this, we have to do it right. Obviously with some painting, some markings, we even talked about rumble strips, you know, flashing LED signs. It's much education as we can that drivers in that area, that things have changed.
Tom, one of the comments, excuse me, one of the comments you made, Tom, was we really didn't have that many accidents there. It's the near misses and they're basically called by people genuflecting. So a four-way stop isn't going to change them genuflecting. Nothing is. I mean, lights aren't going to.
Exactly. I mean, what you're hoping there is you're going to stop one set of traffic, one car going one way and another car going the other way. That if one car stops, at least if the other car runs a stop sign, basically they're not going to collide in the middle. The chances of two of them running the stop sign is what we're trying to accomplish. I mean, Asbury and Spring Green still has accidents in that intersection.
So what I guess I'm getting at is we already have data collected by Tom. We have cameras that should have more data on it. We already have data when we did the east-west corridor through Asbury Road that we know something needs to be done at that intersection. We just need to decide what. And I thought we decided it was going to be a roundabout, but the problem is that's going to take longer time. So the question is, are we going to wait till we put a roundabout in or do we want to put something temporary? And do we want to put a lot of money into a study and for lights or stop signs or whatever, when we know that's not where we're going to end up?
I, I guess along those lines and along what, what Craig said, um, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, the accidents are predominantly, since Asbury is the through street, the accidents are caused by people coming either direction on Cyple for the most part.
Correct. Yep.
So what would happen is a stopgap measure if to put flashing stop signs on site, both, both sides of Cyple, on the Cyple stops where they are now, I mean, at least get those people to stop or try to stop.
May not change their behavior even with the flashing stop signs is what we're worried about. They're still just going up there. They're still giving the quick look and they're rolling the stop signs.
Well, my, my concern that you raised that the last meeting was that where we catch most of our speeders or as soon as they get out past Maple Hills, that's where the speed picks up.
Yeah.
And my concern would be that if we put a four-way stop in there, it may give a false sense of security to people on those side roads and people are going to blow through those stop signs on Asbury Road. I, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I, that would, to me, speeding and blowing through those stop signs might be a bigger issue than what we have now.
Yeah, we may solve one issue, but like you said, we may have more issues with people now running a stop sign there. You know, it's fix one problem, you might create another problem. But again, what's the, what are we trying to prevent there? Is it, is it the accidents that we're having there and the safety of that intersection? So, so if somebody runs a stop sign, are they going to cause an accident? Possibly, but our chances are that they're going to at least have to stop. Most traffic will learn to stop there and avoid accidents. That's our goal. Do you have the data you need or what data do you need to help you make this decision? Yes, yes. Question to the council. I don't. You know where I stand. Yeah. Or sit. I didn't, I didn't.
I wanted to throw one other thing out there because we've been talking about the safety of it. It's now what if, I mean, I, I drive in Dubuque quite a bit every day. So one of the things I've noticed is as you drive along Asbury Road going into Dubuque, you will notice that it's only 35 miles an hour from our city limits to the funeral home. And then from there it becomes 30 mile an hour. As you proceed further, you'll see that, uh, as it becomes university, it becomes like 25. What if we look at a 30 mile an hour speed limit through Asbury as opposed to the 35? Because I think we'll all admit that most people see 35 and they figure I can do 39, 40, uh, this way.
The average speeds I've seen out there, I've been sitting out there quite a bit lately at that intersection, about 42 miles an hour coming up through that area. So.
So we post a 30 mile an hour speed limit. Let them know that it's, there's a new speed limit. Yeah, I mean, be somewhat gracious at first with, uh, with, if they're doing 35, yeah, we're not going to write that up and just somewhat let them learn that it's like, hey, we're trying to reduce the speed, but by reducing the speed for the traffic that is going to be turning on, off of Cyple, it also gives them a longer period of time because instead of a car doing 42 miles an hour, it's now maybe doing 33, 34.
Should I look at that the other way? If you're only going 30 miles an hour, you have no chance for a gap. You're going to have everybody bumper to bumper because you don't have any clearance.
Would it help put in one of those signs that flash what your speed is?
Well, we already have one out west by the Meadows Golf Course out there with a radar sign. Yeah, more radar signs would be fantastic, but again, that's in the city Dubuque for the westbound traffic on Asbury Road approaching Cyple Road. That's why we've never put one there.
Well, the corner of JFK and Kaufman is one of the worst corners in city Dubuque. They went to the flashing stop signs and their accidents have dropped dramatically. I would like to see us do something like that for sure.
Yeah, definitely.
I think that I like the.
We would do the same like Spring Green. We'd set it up like that, that the flashing stop ahead signs and flashing stop signs. Uh, just keep in mind, those are about $2,000 a sign. So, I mean, they're solar powered, so they, they work, but.
Do we have a sign on, on Cyple on either side that says reminding people cross traffic doesn't stop? I think there is one, right?
A couple years ago, trying to reduce accidents there as well.
Okay. So I think the question is, we have all this information. We have all these ideas. How are we going to pick which one? Where, where do we gather the information to make our decision? That's where we're at.
I guess my opinion is start with, start small and then work up to a more, if it, if it continues, then we have to take more aggressive steps. I'm, I'm with you on the flashing stop signs like they have on Kaufman, but as a start, uh, as a minimum start, but.
Well, and I might interject something here too. We could always put in the flashing stop ahead signs and stop signs on Cyple at Asbury right now. We could get those ordered and get those in. And as spring would get here because we would have to paint the roadways anyway, if we decided to put a four-way stop sign in there, at that time, we would already have at least those signs in place and see if we do have a reduction in accidents just from those signs maybe. But if the cause is genuflecting, which means they're not taking time to look at the cross. Correct. How does the flashing stop? Because they're already stopping, right? I mean, the one, well, no, the scenario you gave was genuflecting, which means they're aware they have to stop and yield, right? By genuflecting, that means I know it's a stop sign. I'm just in a big hurry. Yep. My question is, will a flashing red, you know, stop sign stop genuflecting? It's still that they're not taking time to look. Correct. If it will, I'm great. I'll put ten of them up tomorrow, but if that in itself doesn't fix the genu-, which was the cause of the most recent accident, a quick poof, dump, gone. And they stopped. They knew they had to stop. They just didn't take the time to look both ways and clear the A pillar. So I.
Tom, on the scope of, or just, just give me some perspective. Are there more accidents at Radford and Asbury or Hales Mill and Asbury or about the same as Cyple and Asbury? I mean, I, I would hate to slow traffic down at one spot and we still have, you know, I just don't know.
It varies from year to year. Honestly, I looked at those numbers and I was trying to say, okay, what's our next dangerous intersection besides Asbury and Cyple? And it goes from three at Asbury and Hales Mill to three at Asbury and Radford. It just kind of varies back and forth, you know? Some of those were weather related because Hales Mill kind of slides there a little bit at the bottom. Yeah. Last weekend or the last snow event, we had a lady slide through the intersection. Uh, in Asbury Road, you have to realize it's probably, it's the main road through Asbury. So most of our accidents are on Asbury Road. Uh, and it just, I mean, we've had people hit light poles out here. So to say all those intersection involves, usually most of those other intersections, though it's not stop sign related, it's people have to stop at those stop signs and look because they have to shoot those gaps.
And how, and how many stop, how many people do you even just genuflect at Asbury and Spring Green? I mean, the crossing guard's been hit, almost hit every, on a daily basis.
Sit there every day and, and write citations for genuflecting those signs. I mean, I can sit here and just watch the cameras and pull them up and just watch cars do the same thing. There again, it's just how much cross traffic goes through there and your visibility through there is again, you can stop and you can do the quick look and you don't have to worry about those cars hitting the A pillars coming at you at 30 miles an hour from the other direction. So. I'm not saying the flashing lights won't help on, on Cyple because people blow through them without even stopping, right? So there is value in that. I'm not saying there's not. I, I just don't know that it, it's the be all and all, but it's a start. Yeah. And that's, that's what I was getting to. If, if we wanted to make half that purchase now, put those signs in there and maybe see if there is a reduction there. I, again, I don't think it's going to stop the genuflecting, but again, it's, we can say we took this step. Let, let me suggest this. Um, we can't do anything till spring anyhow. So you can make all the decisions you want tonight and we're not going to put a stop sign in on Asbury Road, right? Because it's winter. So let's let Beth talk to City Dubuque and clarify where they're at study-wise. You let us know, just drop us a note here in, in the next three weeks, what you want from a study. And then we'll, we'll get quotes based on what we feel the consensus is. In that committing anything, but I'm still struggling with what, what you need to make this decision to turn it into something. And the traffic study could address the 30 mile an hour, right? Safety. Well, it will help or it won't help. So, I mean, we can debate all night, but we're not going to do anything till spring anyhow. So we'll, uh, talk to the city. You tell us what you think you need. We'll try to compile that and give our best guess of what you want at the first meeting in January in terms of studies. We can turn them around in 30 days, right? You can make a decision in February. We can order signs. We can get with Dubuque. We can plan for rumble strips or paint or whatever. So I just don't see a reason to be to definite when we don't have the data, we can't do anything. And we don't know where Dubuque's at. They may want to study regardless, right? So what do, what are we talking about? They won't do without the study. I guess they made the decision for us.
Jim, the only thing we could do though is we could put flashing stop lights, flashing stop signs on Cyple immediately, right? If, as soon as, or as soon as they come in.
Will. Yeah. Um, just their stop signs. If you think that's what you want, we'll get them on order. I can't ask you to make a motion for that effect tonight, but if I re, see if we're not, do you think you want it? Yeah.
Jim, Dubuque says they've got four flashing stop signs, so we could get them immediately.
It's just stops on, so it's not. Okay. Yeah. Will they, will they let us put them in? Okay. Um.
Probably. I mean, it, Jim, like I said, Bob, Bob, they offered, they have four in stock. So I don't think we, we'll have to wait for, you know, stop signs to get ordered.
Okay. Is everybody okay with at least doing flashing stops on Cyple?
I think a step flashing stop sign would be great. I think we should start.
So, okay. So Dubuque can't give them to us or whatever, we'll place an order. You'll approve at the next meeting. If, if you don't approve it, we'll cancel the order, sell them on eBay. I don't know. We'll, we'll do something with them. Okay. Uh, I think that's it. Roundtable. Beth, do you have anything or Sarah?
No.
Okay.
Merry Christmas.
All right. Everyone enjoy the holidays.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor? Close. Thank you, everyone.
Aye.